Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this fine October evening, whether here in the audience, or at home on TV, or on the web. Those who are here, please take note of the exits around the room, and now join me as we reassert our faith in the Stars and Stripes.
A pleasure to be here. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where the exits are.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the new public hearing for Havlin Shopping Center. Megan, a motion to open a public hearing for both building number two and building number three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a reminder to anyone watching, this would be a refacing of the building that used to, a while back, the East Park Pharmacy, and more recently, it was Awesome Foods, and the building located just north, which was, most recently, Gibraltar Bank. The buildings will be resurfaced exactly the same as the facade and hardy board, as the site just to the south, owned by the same owner, Mr. Leese, which is Havlin Shopping Center. That noted, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? No? Any comments from the consultants?
We had asked Mr. Leese to make certain changes to the plan, and the newest plans that were dropped off do reflect those changes.
Those changes, by the way, for everyone's verification, are to locate the septic, and Ms. Paladaro, our attorney, and I both corresponded with Ms. Moss, the zoning administrator, and she is happy and satisfied with what is shown, and that was the only issue we had from the last meeting. Any comments from the board?
No.
Consultants is a singular form.
Consultant, oops, that's right. Consultant. Megan, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And who has this file? I'm sorry, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I do.
Yay!
Resolution granting site plan amendment approval, October 21st, 2015, resolution 15-40. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized designatee to sign the plan subject to the following conditions: payment of all fees and escrow.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And who has the next file?
He does, too.
Yay!
Resolution granting site plan amendment approval, Havlin Shopping Center, building
three, October 21st, 2015, resolution 15-41. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized designatee to sign the plan, subject to the following conditions: payment of all fees and escrow.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I was doing my yay, which was probably not very professional, because Mr. Pickett is our newest member, being an alternate, and it was his first time to read a resolution, and believe me, they can be complicated.
He stumbled, so we're gonna have to give him all the rest of them. Do the practice.
Mr. Leese, you're here tonight, but you were just approved.
Oh.
You're all done.
All set?
All set.
We just finished it, yep.
Would you like a copy of the resolutions?
Okay, don't need any for me. Thank you very much.
Do you want the copy of the resolutions?
Are those plans for the planning office?
Well, these are just the copies that I dropped off yesterday, yeah.
Right, the ones that you have. Does he need more of them?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
We asked you to drop off how many copies last time?
Yeah, what did we?
To drop off how many copies last time?
That was Mike's, I thought, that we asked for.
Drop off four.
No, no, no. Dropped off four.
I have, I mean, I have one, I can give it back.
I brought four of each.
Right.
Mr. Leese, you want to copy the resolutions?
I don't know how many you need normally.
If you want to drop those off, we'll take them, let's put it that way.
Well, these are just two originals here.
Oh, no, then, no, 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 we're fine.
Okay, if you need more, just tell me.
Don't, we look forward to seeing the changes when you get started.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just so you know, what needs to happen, is the chair's gonna sign it, and you'll have to talk to Tad about getting a building permit. Okay.
Yeah, everything is in.
I have the document up here.
That's fine.
Okay. How many are you going to build?
Yep.
Oops.
Yeah. Okay, great, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
I'm home and start today. Michael's supposed to have the original.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Hutchins-Statsburg Storage. The applicants are seeking a special use permit, as well as site plan amendment approval, to add three new buildings to the rear of the site. And welcome back, Mr. Groninger, and thank you for your service tonight, Mr. Pickett. Megan, a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, Mr. Turner, you did a great job of turning everything around in a dime last time from the last meeting, responding to all the comments from Morris Associates, making the changes to the parking area, et cetera.
Correct.
Anything you'd like to add?
Unless you want me to walk through everything, I'd rather just keep moving on.
So would we, I think.
I brought the drawings, but, I mean, these are just.
Everyone's had a chance to take a thorough review, I hope, of all of them. I'm gonna point, I sometimes like to do this, this is the file we've accumulated now on this site, and it seems kind of heavy, but part of that is dictated by the fact that we had other state agencies involved now, including the DEC, and also there were some, because of the grading that's required to do, there was a lot of, as you know, stormwater reviews, so, but I personally feel as though we're ready to move forward tonight. Let me start to my left with the consultant. Ms. Paladaro, any comments?
We just need one piece of information from Mr. Turner. You had submitted a revised plan for this future parking area, the deferred parking, and we had gone back and forth about having it meet certain landscaping requirements, if it was ever, if it's ever constructed. And I just wanted to clarify, because your email, I didn't understand. So, anyone that's following along, I'm on sheet PZ 1.3. You had said that you would have a total, I wasn't, can you just come and point to the plan?
In your email, you said you'd take, add some landscape beds, we're supposed to have fifteen.
For the 16 spaces, yeah, that was.
We're supposed to have 15 percent landscaped beds inside a parking area. 15 percent is supposed to be landscaped.
Okay, it's, what we would be able to do, because there is space to extend this further back, you could add two more islands in here to accommodate some additional landscaping within the parking area. It's not gonna meet your landscaping requirements completely, but it does reduce down the impact.
You were counting that bed nearest the road as an island, I wasn't.
I was counting this area, this area, and.
Because when you said four, I didn't know what was being included.
Oh, because I can conclude, this area is one, this area was two, and then if you add two more back in here.
That's what we were thinking, too. We just wanted to clarify, so you would add two more landscaped beds.
Two additional.
And then for the board, that brings it up to 5 percent. And at the agenda meeting, which unfortunately I was the only board member at, what we discussed was, is that when the town board put in the requirement of 15 percent landscaping in any parking area, I think that was probably meant more for new development, where you have an undisturbed site, so that you don't have, you know, expanses of asphalt and concrete. And a site like this, that's already pretty developed, and the scale is large, and you don't have a lot of land, it seems reasonable, at least to me, to relax that parking, that requirement of 15 percent down to five. And what's originally proposed there, it's not quite two, so adding the two extra beds would get it up to 5 percent.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
I definitely agree with it. We don't want to make it any harder on these rebuilds like this.
No, this is the old one.
Thank you. Mr. Sotero, you joined us. Any comments on Hutchins-Statsburg? So you'll need to use the microphone.
Trying to get to it.
Sorry.
These are new, though.
Yes, a note to all, we have new microphones.
Oh, goodie. No, most of our comments were, most, all of our comments, both Liz Axelson and Andy Lern, were addressed as part of this, and so I think based upon some of the emails that were going back and forth today, I think some of the things that I had spoken about in the emails about the boulders, I guess that's gonna be in here, for Fire Department. And then, the other thing is any changes that might occur in terms of the number of parking spaces based upon what Bob, Bob was talking about, that would just have to be reflected in the zoning table. But other than that, I mean, I think, you know, all of our comments, you know, were good.
Thank you very much. Let me start to my right, Mr. Oliver, any comments?
No, no major comments, just, you know, we're excited to, I'm excited to see you guys hopefully get this up and running.
Ms. Dexter?
No comment, other than it's been a pleasure to work with you guys. You've been very responsive to all of our questions and requests.
I want to echo that, I know I'm not supposed to praise people too much, but you've been fantastic, you really do pay attention to, you're very detailed.
Well, I find, you know, by doing that, it goes real smoothly.
It does. We agree. Mr. Groninger?
Thank you for filling an empty building.
Mr. Murphy?
Ditto.
Ms. Kane?
Three, three times ditto? I don't know. No, it's, you guys have done a great job, and we really appreciate it very much.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak about this application? There being none, Megan, a motion, Ms. Paladaro, is it okay if I close the public hearing? We don't, I see you're still doing something, and I cut you off on comments.
We had an older resolution printed.
Now we have a young one.
Who has this file? Okay.
Megan, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, resolution granting site plan amendment and special use permit approval, Hutchins-Statsburg Storage LLC, October 21st, 2015, resolution 15-3. Let's see. Whereas the applicant, Robert Turner, has submitted an application for site plan amendment approval and special use permit approval to install three exterior self-storage buildings at an existing mixed-use facility on property located at 4920 Albany Post Road. Whereas, 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 and I'm not kidding, there are many of these. One more whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a determination of nonsignificance, finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. And be it further resolved that the planning board makes the following findings pursuant to section 108-8.1 of the zoning law. Ah, I guess I should read these three, and then we'll get to the end. The project will comply with the applicable requirements of articles four and five of the zoning law, although the current use of the site is not consistent with the purposes of the neighborhood business district. The site is not located near a neighborhood. The permitted increase in scale will not result in any impacts to the surrounding area, as self-storage is a low-intensity use, and the new buildings will be placed to the rear of the site and will not be visible from the roadway. The project is consistent with the purposes of the zoning law. The project will not result in any excessive off-premises, noise, dust, odor, solid waste, or glare. The project will not cause a significant traffic congestion or overload existing roads as is located on US, or I'm sorry, New York State Route 9, a significant commercial corridor. The New York State DOT has indicated the project will have a minimal effect on traffic. And number five, the proposed use is suitable for the site at its proposed intensity. The wetlands have been previously been degraded and do not contain suitable habitat for any threatened or endangered species. Be it further resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect to the requested modifications of the site development standards to permit the parking area, which contains less than the required amount of landscaping. The parking area to the north of the building is not proposed to be constructed until and unless a need for additional parking arises. If constructed, the parking area will include planting beds every four spaces on the northern side of the new parking area. The inclusion of additional beds in the parking area would require additional disturbance and blasting of rock. Number two, there will be no adverse impacts to the neighboring properties from the modification of the landscaping standard. The applicant is proposing to construct a total of.
Four.
Four planting beds, which will soften the view of the parking area from the road. The site is an existing non-conforming site in the district. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the site plan, and authorizes the chair as authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following, there are six conditions: payment of all fees and escrow, approval by the Department of Environmental Conservation of a wetlands permit for the intrusions into the wetland and wetland buffer, removal of boulders at the northeast corner of the property at the end of the driveway from South Cross Road, revision of sheet PZ 1-1.3 to modify the northern side of the parking area as shown on the deferred parking expansion plan, to include the addition of three six-foot-wide raised-bed planting areas, dividing the parking stalls into four areas with four parking spaces each, revision of note eight on PZ 1 dot 1A and B to additionally require that the landscaping be maintained for the life of the site, removal of boulders as referenced in the Fire Department letter. I assume that's what FD stands for?
Yes.
Okay.
That's repetitive, because I had already.
Two and six are the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's delete six.
All right. Okay, be it further resolved that the planning board grants a special use permit to permit an expansion of the non-conforming scale by up to 31 percent to permit a scale of 60,201 square foot as shown on the approved site plan. Be it further resolved that the zoning administrator shall not endorse a certificate of occupancy for the new storage units until the required landscaping improvements have been installed in accordance with the site plan.
And just as a note, the point about maintenance is the, for note eight, is it's the plants that are in the rain garden, the fire retention area, that's required by the DEC that they have to be maintained, et cetera, et cetera, so keeping you clean and out.
I was just gonna ask for a second. That's Mr. Murphy, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Bob, do we need to revise the parking, parking table, or based upon the changes, even though you're talking about reducing the islands, we still have the same number of parking spaces?
We still have the same number of parking spaces.
Okay, so there's no changes needed.
There's no changes.
Okay, thank you.
They would extend it out further.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you both, and we look forward to seeing you again on other projects, Mr. Turner.
So then, for getting drawings back to you, I require, how many sets do I need to get back to you for, for sign-off?
If we check with Tad. We just had this question come up with the prior application.
Well, I can tell you, say it's tomorrow. There's one for the file, one for each of the consultants, so that's three, then I normally, there's normally, usually applicants want to keep a couple of these sets, so when I sign, I'm usually signing seven to eight, but I've signed 12 before.
I don't think we need.
I never understand, in other words, it's sort of random as to how many that we get.
We require three.
Right, the building department usually wants one, if you're gonna be pulling a building permit, and I know that Tad likes to have, that's also the fire inspector, they keep one on file, so they know where access is, and that's about it.
Anne is getting the exact number.
Okay, thank you.
And Bob, why don't you do this, just before you think that you're ready to get the, get the plan signed, before you make the number of sets, why don't you get me over one set, and then I'll go through, you know, the conditions, or make sure everything is all set, this way, then you can make your sets, and we can tell, you know, the chairman to go ahead and sign.
Sure.
Okay.
Because I can just shoot those over as a PDF?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Planning board file, town engineer, building inspector, appropriate fire district, town highway is a town red, which it is not, you get your own copy.
Well, part of it's on town red.
Uh, this is right. This is right. This is right, so that would be five copies for us, and one for you, so a total of six.
No problem. Yep, okay.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we'll be seeing you soon after what I heard tonight, good luck.
Well, could keep you busy.
The next item on the agenda is Mike's Auto Center. The applicants are seeking site plan approval, the applicant is not here. In the interim, we were submitted new plans. I assume everyone has had a chance to review them. I believe I copied at least the two vice chairs, I may have copied everyone, but one of my comments is that there's a note on the site plan that says that what we would be approving is for design purposes only.
Yes, no.
And I basically said that it's not going to fly with the, with anybody, including the zoning administrator. What we're approving has to be what we're looking at.
Exactly, yes.
But they've reduced down the number of car spaces, display spaces, from 85 to 60. They've increased the amount of pervious by pulling back some of the asphalt, and made a few other changes that we suggested, including increasing landscaping, they've labeled the site features, et cetera. They also, he's, the berm that we talked about last time with some evergreens has been now proposed and added to the plans. So what we were planning to do tonight was type the action, circulate, and get it ready for a possible extended public hearing for the second meeting in November, when it's close to Thanksgiving. That all noted. Any comments from consultants, now that we're both?
Well, we still have to look at it a little bit further, but it, you know, it looks like many of the things that we were concerned about in the planning board was concerned about, it seems like a lot of those have been addressed, but we need to look at it a little bit more, but I don't see any issue where we can't go ahead and circulate tonight.
Thank you.
And we'll provide a comment letter next week.
Okay.
Ms. Paladaro, any comments?
No comment.
Start to my left, Ms. Kane?
No, no comments.
Mr. Murphy?
None right now.
Mr. Groninger?
Same, none at this point in time.
We're a quiet board this fine October evening. Ms. Dexter?
Nothing from me either.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment at this time.
Well, then to summarize, basically from the no comments, what I want to point out is just that the purpose of the evening, as I said, was to get it started for the benefit of the audience. When we first saw this, the planning board had many concerns. This is the site that's, if you're coming into Hyde Park from Poughkeepsie, it's the first commercial property on your right, or for people who live here, it's just south of the Stewart's, located down on nine. The site is, this is under court-ordered mediation, I guess I'll call it, for them to come in to seek approvals, to come more into compliance, because they have way too many cars, what they were approved for. They originally approved for 45, and they're up to somewhere upwards of, I think, 100 at one point. And they were told last time that there was still too many, so they brought it down, as I said, to 65. We still, I think it'll be better for us as we go forward with the county and with the fire departments, to see if there's maneuverability for safety, et cetera, but they did answer a lot of what our concerns were last time. So, who has this file, so we can get the referral started?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution typing action, referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. Mike's Auto Center, October 21st, 2015, resolution number 15-31. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type-one action under SECRA, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the application, and directs its secretary to send notice of its intents to all involved and interested agencies, and three, directs its secretary to refer the site plan, site plan set to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239M of the general municipal law.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. A note to everyone, the reason why this is a type-one action, because they're not really proposing that much, is that it's across from a site that's located on the federal historic register, and that makes it automatically a type-one action. So we'll, I, did we communicate to the applicant's representative how many copies he needed for us to refer?
Yes, I did. By email, I was, I think that, you know, you made some comments, and then I had added on to that, that we needed six sets up here.
That's the reason why I asked that out loud. I remember.
Six sets in envelopes, but, oh, you got them already?
Oh.
Wow.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, so we can get this started, great, get it going. The next item on the agenda is expedient, the applicants are seeking recommendation for a sign permit. Everyone had a chance to see this, oh, come on up. Please state your name for the record, since we haven't met, you need to sit in the middle and speak into the microphone, please.
Charles Millroy.
Mm-hmm. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments or questions? Good night, good night, both consultants, thank you very much. See you, happy Halloween.
Nice having you.
Who has this filed, then?
I do. Resolution recommendation for issuance of a sign permit pursuant to town code section Expedient Environment Solutions, resolution number 15-45. Whereas, 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 whereas the applicant has amended the application to present a more unified design among the tenant signs, now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect to the requested freestanding sign face. The applicant has agreed to present each of the three tenant spaces in unified design? Is that?
Yes.
Design? Be it therefore, be it further resolved that the board hereby recommends a sign permit be issued within 10 days of this recommendation as specified in the code. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're all set.
So it is approved as is?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is Jay Nails. Haven't seen you in a while, welcome back.
It's easier to work elsewhere.
And let me rescind that welcome back. Is there anything you want to say, other than the fact?
No, it's.
The sign's been up for a while without approval?
No. Everything, everything there went to Zarian. For some strange reason, he thought they were 10-inch letters that were supposed to be on the building. So, I went back and explained to him, everything on that section of building is all 16, 16 inches, and he said, proceed, send your insurance forms, and that was that.
It's, we, it's for the design consistency and the fact that it's based so far back, and the overall size of the facade, if you had 10-inch letters, it'd be like looking at a Barbie doll, you know, sign up there.
And see it like that.
Yeah, so, any comments from the board? Who has this file?
I do. Resolution recommendation for issuance of a sign permit pursuant to town code section 108-24.3A, parentheses four, parentheses D, Hyde Park Mall tenant wall sign for, that's supposed to say Jay Nail?
Jay Nails.
Okay, not just nails. October 21st, 2015, resolution number 15-47. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings with respect to the requested wall sign. One, the additional size of the letters is appropriate, given the sign's distance from the road. the road. Two, the increase in size is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the wall sign is being placed. And three, the size is consistent with and similar to other nearby tenant wall signage. Be it further resolved that the board hereby grants the applicant the requested sign bonus to permit a maximum letter height of sixteen inches, as shown on the application, and recommends that the sign permit be issued within ten days of this recommendation as specified in the code.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. See how hard it is to work in this town?
It's just so easy here. I wish they were all this easy, truthfully.
Have a good evening. Thank you, good to see you. Before we go on to the last two items, make it a motion to set a public hearing for Mike's Auto Center for November the fourth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I had to get a calendar in order to know what date it was, I apologize. The next item on the agenda is Jerkowski, the applicants are seeking a waiver of site plan to make some improvements to the property at Six Calmer Place. The site is not visible from either one of the historic sites or from the river, and we've received a recommendation from the zoning administrator. Who has this file?
BB. October 21st, resolution number fifteen forty-six, whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Cynthia Jerkowski on October 13th, 2015, for the property located at Six Calmer Place in the town of Hyde Park, and whereas, 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 whereas.
Now therefore be resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled Jerkowski regarding the specific request as received October 13th, 2015, and in, and in the building permit application files for these projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and the last item on the agenda is a release of escrow. And Ms. Dexter has that one, I think, don't you?
Yep, it's resolution fifteen dash F, and it's for the projects Al's Yard, Christmas, Creekside Estates, Dollar General, and the Victory Lake Nursing Home water tank.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just a little bit of discussion, the, out of the five projects, four are obviously all completed, finished, and signed. Creekside Estates, as you saw, formally withdrew. The reason why they formally withdrew is because they're seeking a forestry permit, and they can't do that while they have an open application out.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes, so this will clear their path, ha, 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 this will, this will enable them to get the forest management and timber harvesting permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any new business or old?
So move.
Motion to close. Motion adjourned, yes, second.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, a very efficient thirty-four minutes, and thank you, media committee, as always, for televising us.
Go Mets.